For Wyndham Park, Huffin 61, and a banner at Mankato Avenue from January 13th through the 27th. I move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle. Seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.8 is a request to change the parking at the corner of Third and Walnut from two-hour parking to loading zone.
I would move to approve the ordinance.
And then the motion by Pam.
Second.
And the second by George. Discussion.
In the cover letter, the person who, you know, proposing the loading zones indicated Third Street in Winona or on, or next to the building, or on Walnut Street, or Third Street, our proposal has come back with a loading zone on Walnut and Third. Would it be better served to have the loading zones out of the main Third Street area and move them to Walnut? Sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk to staff on this before the meeting, but...
Listen, when I saw this, I just questioned the need for two loading zones myself.
Well, yeah, that as well.
I mean, everybody would like to have a, you know, a quick parking place in front of your business, but...
And I think, no, this is an active area, probably at the time, that other businesses are also soliciting business, and it's going to restrict parking, probably, for those patrons. And, you know, I'd like to know that, first of all, a question for staff, is there a fee that is charged for the loading zone designation, or is there something that...
Mayor and Council, they do have a per-sign fee.
Fee, yeah.
That we request the check be submitted to the city, but we don't cash it until the ordinance is adopted.
Okay.
And I believe it's $135 per sign.
Yeah, because I think other requests have indicated that, you know, the payment has released, that they're aware of the payment or something like that. Mayor or City Clerk, do we have a motion on the floor on this?
Yes.
We do have a motion to approve the...
I would like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
To only allow one loading zone on Walnut Street.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Is, are there other businesses that do have two, two loading zones, two parking places reserved?
Is anybody aware of anybody else that has more than one?
I think Mayor and Council, I think that's very unusual, to have more than one serving a business.
Okay.
Well, I would support the amendment myself. I think one is, I think it's too many. George?
Could the motion just be withdrawn and voted on what you're talking about there, or is it just best to follow the process that you just mentioned?
Might just be easier to vote on the amendment and then on the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Call of question. Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the amendment, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, amendment passes. We'll vote on the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended, aye.
Okay, aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2014 final levy and budget. I'd move to adopt the 2014 budget.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George.
Point of order, there's actually two resolutions here that we, I think, need to vote separately on each, or can we do?
Can.
Can we do them? Okay, thank you, Carrie. I guess then I withdraw my point of work.
Okay. Is there any, anybody want to speak to this issue tonight? The manager of the finance department? No?
There aren't any questions.
There aren't many questions. I'm not hearing any. George?
I know a lot of times questions come up with the Port Authority, and this year, which Al and I are members of, the Port Authority General Fund is now, we reduced it by $50,000, so, just so the, right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.2 is the 2014 Visit Winona Budget.
And I believe we have Jeff Stevenson here from Visit Winona to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, thank you very much to the City Council and to the city of Winona for the extensive support they provide to Visit Winona. We're really fortunate, I think, to have Pat Mutter and her staff together to make the story of Winona clear to really quite a wide range of audiences. They bring both an energy, and I think they've been creative each year, and particularly this year, to do new innovation and begin to address the issues of new platforms for technology, like websites, Facebook, et cetera. And the really positive thing is, Winona has so many things around which we can tell the story. There's arts of many types, there's the cultural activities, the music, the sport events, and of course, the strong environmental area and outdoor recreation that brings people from really all over the region to get to know what's here, how it works, and to tell their friends about it. And so, the story, in a sense, is very easy to tell, because it's a good story, and what Pat and her team do is pull the resources together to make that happen. Some of the features that we've worked on this year, to update the website, provide greater depth to what's told about the various partners and programs that we support, and to help the people that are in and around the region, Minneapolis, Chicago, the region, people who travel here for both business and pleasure, to understand the depth of what's available within the community. We've been featured in a number of really quite prominent magazines, Midwest Living, Milwaukee Journal, and positioned ourselves in places like the Minneapolis Airport and the Mall of America, to tell people who may not happen through our valley at this point to know about the stories of Winona and what this has to offer. We've continued to strengthen the message of the partners and the people that make up the story of Winona. How do we know what's to be told unless the people who have the businesses and the programs, they need to tell their stories, and we link those stories with the people around us. The outdoor recreation continues to grow, has a strength within the region with the, both universities investing in that, and the city has involved itself in expanding the outdoor recreation program, and that provides another diverse program for people to come at different times, to use the hotels, and to experience different seasons. We've expanded and strengthened the team of provide, people who help provide support through Visit Winona, strengthening the in-town work with our partnership coordinator, and strengthened our web savvy with a person who's working on social media and the work. So those are all part of, and parcel of a way to link together people that are making the community strong. Main Street programming, downtown art programming, work at the levy, Bike Association, the list is quite lengthy. We've continued to work to develop revenue from other sources, grants, of course, the partnership program, and by and large, the strength of the program is, people come here because they want to experience Winona and either relive some college experiences, bring their families, or learn something new about a very special part of the community. So, with that, the most important thing is to say thanks, and to look forward to continued development of relationships across the wider region that brings people here. So, again, my thanks to you, and to Pat and her team, to make this work. And questions?
Any questions for Jeff? Now?
I don't have a specific question, I just have a comment, that this year and next year, I guess, might be a little bit of a challenge, since we no longer have 112 rooms that we had before, and I see that's reflected in your budget, and I'm sure that was a factor when you planned your budget, since most of the budget comes from the lodging tax revenue.
It does.
Imposed by the city, so I wish you good luck in responding to those challenges, and hopefully, there's an entrepreneur or two that will revitalize that property and bring some more rooms online for our community.
Thank you, it'd be a good thought.
Yeah.
I just want to add, it's been, it's a real pleasure for me, because I work very closely with Pat, and Mary, and Kate, and they're in our building, and it's, you're doing a lot of good work, and I think the CDB has matured a lot in the last few years, and getting into areas of social media that I think is beneficial.
I do think that what happens at times is people, as you've noted, remark, when they see Pat at various state and regional meetings, and they kind of look and wonder how she accomplishes what she accomplishes, how fast and far and deeply the message travels, and sort of like, how do we get to those places? And the answer is, there's a lot of hard-working people, so, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Pat.
Next item is item 5.3. It's a resolution for the governmental accounting standards, and there are three separate resolutions in this request.
I guess I'd move to commit specific revenue sources in special, in the special revenue fund. Is that how you need that to be worded?
This is kind of complicated.
Yes.
So, Mary, how about summarizing this?
Mayor and Council, these are resolutions that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board says that have to be approved before the year-end, in order to provide the funds and the restrictions and commitments and assignments and designations, as we have done in the past. This was new about two years ago, I believe. So the first resolution, in order to have our special revenue funds, which would be like our emergency fund, our, Lucy works with the community development, different special programs for loans, all of those kind of funds, we need to have a special resolution, and I have it, I guess, worded the way that it needs to be worded. And so, in order to do that, that resolution needs to be approved. The second item is, in order to restrict, or assign, or, excuse me, to reserve or commit fund balances, and that would be like for debt service funds or capital project funds, in order to have those specifically set aside, the council has to approve that. So for instance, like a debt service fund, if we have money that we received, and we're getting it from a tax levy, and it's supposed to be used to pay back money that we owe on, on bonds, which we wouldn't use for anything else, but we want to have it set aside as a reserve, you need to approve that we can do that. And then the third item is to assign fund balance, you have to approve that resolution, and that is given to the finance director to assign that fund balance, and that would be like for, an example, would be like for cash flow purposes. So at year-end, we figure out how much cash flow, how much money we need to set aside in order to pay the bills, for instance, for the next six months, because we don't get any property tax levy, or any local government aid until the summertime. So we have about six months that we have to have money available to pay all of the bills, so it seems wise to set that money aside, so it's not used for some other purpose. And so, that's basically what these three different resolutions are accomplishing. It's something we've been doing, I guess I've been here since 1995, so we've basically been doing all of these things, all of these years, but now, every year, you have to approve this, these specific resolutions, even though there are no changes to the overall concept year after year.
Okay, thank you. I think Michelle made a motion.
I did.
I should have had a second before I asked, called on Mary.
One second.
A second from Paul. Further discussion or questions?
Just a clarification, does the motion just include the first resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
So I'd make a motion to reserve or commit the fund balance per the attached exhibit two.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
And I'd further move to assign the fund balance as described by finance director.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.4 is the Lake Park Bike Path Maintenance Reconstruction Account.
I'd move to approve the attached resolution.
I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Do we know how much, how many remaining funds are going to be? Have any idea?
Mayor and Council, I don't have the final, all the final numbers, I'm still working with the Public Works Department. There are some departments that have paid for some black dirt that did not get charged against the actual bike path, that I need to move that over, but it looks like, just an estimate, that there probably will be, will be about $100,000 that, that actually was raised, that has, was not used, and so that would be what would be set up in this Lake Park Bike Path Maintenance and Reconstruction Account. And so, as I explained in this, that money then could only be used for that purpose, so I don't know, in five years, or 10 years, or whenever that bike path needs to be addressed again, that money would be available as a starter for, for use for that.
Well, I think it's an excellent idea. We're going to be, somebody's going to be grateful in the future.
In the future, I hope so.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.5 is the renewal of the property and liability insurance for 2014, excluding the workers' comp.
Motion by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by George. Mary, did you want to say something about this? No? Just...
This is just the basic renewal for the 2014 property and liability insurance, and I'd address any questions that you might have.
Al has one.
Yeah. We usually have a pre-council meeting on this, and it's always a lively discussion, talking about inland marine insurance and all that kind of stuff. It's kind of dry stuff, but one thing I did notice with your presentation tonight is a number of options that the city has, as far as deductibles are concerned. Most of our deductibles in all of these categories of insurance are at $50,000. There are some, some premium savings if the deductible is raised to $75,000. I guess my question would be, what, what impact does that have from, from a finance department and from a savings department?
And Mr. Thurlie, I did ask the insurance agent to put something together that we could review, what the savings would be, but where additional costs would be, and also where our claims have been, so then we could kind of take a look to see if it would be worthwhile to bump it up to 75. When we looked at that about three years ago, it did not look like it was a cost benefit to the city, because we felt we were, we easily would be paying more by doing so than the, paying more than what we would be saving, but it's worthwhile to take a look. And we, if we, if we would bump up one area, I believe we have to bump up almost all the other areas as well. We can't just pick like property and not inland marine. I think that it would be throughout all, all of the different coverage areas.
Yeah, and it's kind of a, you know, some are up, some are down kind of thing, as far as premiums go, when I look at this, and, you know, I, to the best of my knowledge, kind of added up the premium savings that we would get by going to a higher deductible, and I came up to about $13,000, but again, it's because I don't understand all the details of the premiums and how they're charged, but that's my rough figure, so if we increase our premium by, or by the deductible by $25,000, it doesn't really seem to wash, at least as far as savings are concerned.
Right.
But not all of those individual elements will always have, you know, a deductible needed for, for an exposure, but I'd like to see us look a little bit more into increasing those deductibles, and how they might save us some premium dollars, and yet, still not expose us to a great degree of liability.
That, and we will, I'll do a review of that. And the other, other item, the reason we didn't do a pre-council this year, or actually the last year, was because this year I didn't get the numbers until 8:30 on Thursday morning, and the city clerk wanted them at 9:30, so I, and there was already a pre-council set. And this, the last year, we didn't get the numbers until into 2014, and they're already pre-councils set for what seemed probably like more of a issue that you'd be, that you needed to meet on than something standard, and we didn't make any major changes.
Okay.
But if you would like, I have, I mean, if they want to know why some of these are up, I'd be happy to answer, like the property or any of those, if you, if you have a question on those.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you a call.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.6 is the renewal for 2014 for the workers' compensation and accident plan for city volunteers.
I'd move to approve the renewal of the premium option.
Motion by Michelle.
I would second that.
Seconded by Pam. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
I'd also move to accept the renew or the accident plan for volunteers. I think it's a second, separate resolution, right?
Yeah.
Motion by Michelle.
I would second that.
Seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.7 is to expand the service hours for Winona Transit. This would be to operate the four regular routes for eight hours on each Saturday, and the proposed hours would be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that, if you approve this plan this evening, the services would begin on February 1st. We do need to have some time for public notice, as well as for Three Rivers to hire additional drivers. And so, the actions that we need to have you approve this evening are to approve the additional service hours, approve the amendment to the agreement with Three Rivers for operating the system, and approve an increase in the 2014 transportation budget.
Well, I want to say thank you to you, because you've been working on this for a while, and I think this is a, this is a wonderful service to be able to have on the streets, and I hope a lot of people think of it as well.
I'd move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Yes. I was wondering with, with this addition, which I'm fully in favor of all three of these, if we can look at the routes, and where the buses stop, and maybe simplifying it. I tried, I tried to figure out the route by reading the pamphlet that goes out, and it's very difficult, and sometimes it seems like the buses don't always go where you need them to go, and I know you can pay a deviation fee, but I'm wondering, like, we can, you know, pass this through, I think adding Saturday is fantastic, but is there a way that we can look at the routes, and where the buses go, and the areas they service, and how the routes are set up? Because I'm going to guess that as time has gone on, we've added more routes they just got added on to, that maybe it now would be a good time to look at them, because... I'm sure the people that ride it know how they work, but as a non-user who wanted to use it, it was very difficult for me to figure it out.
Well, first of all, we encourage people to either call the dispatch number, or call the city for assistance in using it, and we do have a lot of people who assist, like at the ORC, DAC, County Human Services, they assist a lot of their clients in understanding how to use the service. We have changed routes a little over the past many years. The four route system seems to work well for us, in that two come from the east, two come from the west, and the main transfer is downtown at Third and Center, and we do cover all of the major industrial parks, shopping areas, all the colleges, and the high school, and the middle school. So we do try to look at where, you know, where people live, and where most would like to ride. So we do try and tweak them a little each year, but as far as a having, looking at an overall change, we would probably need to hire a consultant to look at the entire system.
What if we were looking at just adding some park stops, or a rec center, or some of the other places that kids in summer might want to get to, or on a weekend? If that would be a first step? I'm just thinking of some of the kids that walk or ride their bike from one end of town to get down to the pool, or to get down to Lake Park, then they're walking down to Lake Park. I'm just thinking, is there a way that we can incorporate some of the public stops in the route? I, I don't want to change that tonight, I just, I wonder if you can look at it, and see if there's a way to incorporate some other tourist-type stops, and to encourage maybe people from out of town to use it. And I even wonder on, on the weekend, if it's possible to stop at the depot when the train comes in, because I keep thinking, the people are coming here, how are they, where, there's nowhere for them, there's not a car rental.
Or a restaurant.
Right, there's, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we're adding a weekend, is there a way we can look at some of the other places that they stop? Because I know during the week, it services people that need to get to work, and I know they, they use it, and it works well, but if we're going to add a weekend, maybe we can look at additional places.
Al, I think you...
Yeah, a couple of questions. Well, first of all, a compliment to our staff, for working hard on this to get it to fruition, and we've heard about it, at least I have, on council for many years, and it's nice to see it possible. I understand MnDOT is providing funding for this. How, how assured are we of that continued funding in the future, beyond what we're approving tonight?
Right. Mayor and Council, we do have an annual contract with MnDOT. We would include this in our base request for 2015.
Okay.
But it is dependent on the ridership. So we really need to do a lot of promoting, and to try and make sure the ridership is there for Saturday.
And then that would be my next request, is that we get some indication of ridership and the differences it's taking now in the community at some point, you know, during that initial year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Paul?
I just wondered if, there's, there was an issue in one of my locations last week, where somebody was outside, and they were, and they missed their bus, because they came inside to stay warm, and I just wonder if those are any issues that are out there at any of the stops? And if, just in the, in the course of overall looking at the whole thing, if we could check, particularly in the wintertime, if there are any locations where maybe people that have exposure, that need to some way get some kind of shelter?
Okay. George?
Do we run any routes in Goodview? Okay, I know that one apartment complex out there, I don't remember what it was called, but they were asking for, for stops, this is a few years back, and I presume we, we did do that?
Right, our, one of the green routes covers most of Goodview. We have had requests from Minnesota City to go into Hidden Valley and Lee Valley, and because Minnesota City isn't part of our service area, we're not permitted to go into that area unless we have MnDOT approve our service area, it would require Minnesota City's, city government to request to be part of that system as well, and that would likely need a separate route to, to go that distance.
And do these buses stop at most apartment complexes, like Fairway Woods or Sherbaleup Apartments?
Right, they, if you look at the routes, most of the larger apartment complexes are within a couple blocks.
Okay. Are our bus routes on the city's website?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Are they on the homepage?
There's a link now.
There is? Okay.
I think it's in the lower-left corner.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.8 is the designation of the official newspaper for 2014, the Winona Daily News, with a bid of 24 cents.
I would move to approve the bid.
Second.
Winona Daily News.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. George?
Now, there's 24 cents for the public, what does that, I mean, what do we get for that, or...
Well, it's... Well, it's a, there's a formula based on the column inches and how big the font size is. So, if you look at a two-by-one legal ad, we usually pay eight to ten dollars. So, every legal notice, it depends on how many column inches that uses.
Any other questions? Al?
Yeah, just a comment, I mean, and these are things that the city has to, is required under law to be published in print form. I know a lot of other official notices are kind of transitioning to a more electronic one, but this is a case where print has to be used.
Good point. Other comments? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point nine is the Development Agreement Extension Request for the Meadows Subdivision.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point ten is the S M I F Grant Authorization.
I would move to approve the required agreements, I guess, the attached grant.
Motion by Michelle.
I would second that.
Seconded by Pam, and this is for a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars for, to be used downtown, in the downtown area to support a business or entrepreneur, and it's all part of the Main Street program, so this is a, is a very good grant. I think Carlos is responsible for applying for it. If that's the case, good job. Other comments?
Just a comment or a question, would this grant be possible if the city did not have a Main Street program? I'm just curious.
Good question.
To see whether that's, you know, been a leverage for us.
It would be possible if the city did not have a Main Street program, but the contact with the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation was made through our Main Street program. So, it definitely did benefit us in applying for the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point eleven is the 2014 Non-Union Wages.
Go ahead.
Second.
Paul, seconded by George. This is recommending a two percent wage increase for all non-union city employees effective January one. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point twelve are revisions to the employee handbook.
I'd move to approve the employee handbook changes.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion? We all received a copy of the handbook, and there's really some, not too many, but six or eight different change, small changes. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carrie's.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
I don't know where we started last time, but we'll start with George.
Okay, thank you. Not too much tonight, just, first of all, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone out there, we'll see you again in the new year, 2014. To our dance participants, good luck with your groups in the, in the dance, dance-off on New Year's Eve. I will not be able to attend it, but I think it'll be quite exciting, and good luck to both of yous and your groups and everyone else, so.
Thank you, we'll need a little of that.
If I could cheerlead, I'd be there pulling for you, so.
Well, you can still vote ahead of time.
And then, just on, on one sad note, just like to extend condolences to the family of John Smoker, John who passed away here a week ago. He was always knowing, known as a very good conversationalist. He always gave you your opinion whether you asked for it or not, and he stood by his opinion. But he's mainly more well-known for being one of the more artistic painters within our city. He's been in the painting business over almost thirty-five, forty years, worked independently and with other contractors, and we were discussing one day just how many gallons of paint did he actually use during his painting career. So, condolences to his daughter, Mandy, and his son, and wish them well as they move on with their healing process. Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, as, as the snow season begins in earnest, I would like to encourage everyone who's responsible for their sidewalks and for, especially for the crossings, that people have to, have to cut through to get out into the crosswalks, to start now and keep those things clear and wide. No telling how much snow we might get, but we can all remember winters past where we, we ourselves have to clamor over, you know, impassable, impassable snow mounds, and I saw somebody actually today, a person more elderly than myself, struggling to, to get over the, to get over a curb that was kind of slushy and, and snowed, snowed in. So, I would just encourage everybody to pick up a shovel and let's, let's keep the, keep the crossings clear.
Paul? I would like to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and for those who are traveling, safe travel. And due to the success, successful and continuing transition from coal to natural gas, there should be less coal and hung stockings on the fireplace, and more affordable heat in people's homes. Adding to that, playful, clean white snow to enjoy as a result of less soot in the air. Thank you. Michelle?
Just wishing a Merry Christmas, and I'm actually going to do something George does, and I'm going to just say to my grandparents for seventy years of marriage this month, wow. It deserves a comment.
Merry Christmas, everybody, good luck to our duo Twinkletozians, and to all of the other dancers representing all of the different great organizations.
I'm going to take a little different tact today. Well, first, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year coming up, and we received some correspondence from our sister city, Misato, Japan. Their organization that does this kind of thing, that's called the Misato International Friendship Association, is celebrating its fifteenth year. And back thirteen years ago, in 2000, our former city manager and myself were the first visitors to Misato, well, then it was called Kagota, now it's called Misato, Japan, and in recognition of that, they sent us copies of the magazine that has a picture of Eric and myself at a tea ceremony in Japan.
Who's that young guy?
Yeah, who is that young guy?
That's exactly what I have.
And all of that, but it was a great experience. And on the back, actually, is a picture of our mayor, current mayor, and the gift that was given to the city of Winona at the last visit by the Misato ambassadors here in this, in this chamber. And also, I understand that the U.S. government is going to present Japan, as much as Japan presented the U.S. government with sakura or cherry blossom trees and those that are wonderfully installed in our Lake Park, the U.S. government is going to present to Japan a collection of dogwood trees, and our sister city, Misato, is going to be the, again, a recipient of those dogwood trees. And I've been asked by the folks in Misato to invite anyone on council to travel to Misato to participate in their ceremony, which will concur or, or happen at the same time as the ambassadors from Winona are traveling to Misato in April. So, if anyone is interested, please let me know, I'll get you in contact with Joe Lepley, and he can fill you in on the details of that great event. It would be nice to see representative from our city government attend that ceremony. I am unable to attend, but anyone on council should put it on their calendar and mark it. It's a great time, you'll have a wonderful time in Japan, believe me.
Do you know if the ambassador from the United States will be at that ceremony?
I, I really don't know at this point, and that would be Caroline Kennedy. I mean, Schlossberg, yeah. And also, just sympathy to the Mac McQuarley family. I know he passed away after our last meeting. Again, Mac always told you how he felt, and it was welcome always to hear from him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there's one item, the approval of the minutes from the December second meeting.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
By Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
My move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to the second to adjourn, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Merry Christmas.